I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Arnold?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Gaddins?
Here.
Councilman Kayler?
Here.
Councilwoman Boyer?
Here.
Mayor Blatchton?
Here.
All present, if you can before.
Do we have any presentations? Does that help out? Do we have any bits? Do we have any correspondence?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a letter that was sent to us, I'm sorry, we gotta apologize to council, when the answer is no, this was given to me just before I came up to this floor. It's from the citizen and he was actually trying to address city council about it. Mr. Etchell, uh, Mara.
Agent Maria.
That's it, Etchell Maria. Uh, I have, sir, for your information, pass mortgages out to all members of council, including cities attorney, and, uh, just, for me to explain to council, um, the citizens had a problem down in his neighborhood, I'm not going to mention names at this point, uh, as a possible real invasion. Uh, but the matter has been addressed, when he brought it to my attention, and it's been addressed by the chief of police and members like his, police department, as well as the code enforcement officer, uh, and myself, so, um, I, as I said, the solicitor has a topic of this, and so does everybody else. Uh, I don't want to, this is not the forum to get into a discussion, I don't want mentioning anyone who's dangerous as a possible invasion. So, we can talk after this, you can talk with the chief of police, uh, after this, okay?
I appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Anything under citizens' comments, conventions upon the business listed on the agenda? Then we will go to minutes, I'll accept the motion, to accept the minutes of the City of Shemoken council meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Motion.
I'll send it.
Motion by Mike, the Senate second by Angie Warren. And a roll call.
Councilwoman Arnold?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Gaddins?
Yes.
Councilman Kayler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Blatchton?
Yes.
Motion carriage unanimous.
Yes, so the, the motion would be to approve the bills from June of twenty twenty-five as listed on the bill list. Unfortunately, because of vacation schedules, the bill list is not available, so, we need to have a motion to ratify the payment of the bills.
With those bills, we don't want to go to Lincoln or Rockover due last two, so some of those bills need to be paid.
Question I have, is there anything else on there that, that's, besides our, in the light bills, with every sort of street lights and pay people's paychecks, is there anything in there that's?
No, there wouldn't be, uh, that includes the payroll, and keep in mind, okay, uh, for the record, when the twenty twenty-five and coming up to twenty twenty-six budget is passed, you are approving the expenditures that I, as a city commissioner, put forward. So, anything that has been purchased is included in the city's budget.
You're saying there are any extraordinary?
Yes, yes. No, there's nothing. Yeah, I know, and they still need to be paid.
Right.
Absolutely. I mean, it's no question, next month. Is there one, is there something in particular? Something's not in common?
No, 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 I just wanna.
I'm just covering, I'm just covering our box, you know, I just don't wanna say yes, and then all of a sudden find out that providing.
Do we have a motion? Anyone want a question? And we'll take a roll call though.
Councilwoman Arnold?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Gaddins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Blatchton?
I was so done, because I did this before, when there wasn't a bill list, and to be consistent, I have to say that, so my roll is done.
There's forty-eight, one minute?
Passed on four-one, but. So next would be our directors' reports, accounts, and finances.
Unfortunately, we don't have the treasurer's report, but we will have it next month, and I'll be happy to rebook those reports next month. The only thing I would like to add here, just two minutes of council and mayor, we've built these quickly. I want you to thank, uh, Brittany Campbell, on behalf of friends and ferals, who presented very well to the workshop via the nine-month TNR program. They all seem to be in agreement with us, it's a good thing, um, and certainly on the, you know, bring, uh, trying to help Shemoken with its feral cat population, and those two main roles. I was just looking at some statistics, and in the lifetime of a cat, and this is on the low, and these ferals live about four years, um, out there. That cat can have, let me see, twelve litters, twelve litters in a life. So you take that bound on fact, of all of those little kittens, then being used to bear their own twelve litters, and it's not hard to understand that this is a service that Shemoken needs, and I fully support, um, and I would like to thank again, the U.S. I.A.C. board, putting the article in the paper and making people aware. Uh, for a relatively small commitment from the city, we can step forward and do the most humane thing possible. Of course, you know, once the cat is TNR, in whatever form, um, if you see a cat with a little clip, tip, they call it, or that means the cats will take care of it, and it's no danger to them. As the article said, they do herd the cats back to its familiar neighborhood.
Yeah.
But the cat will live out its life. You know, nature will take its course, but it will not be. Yeah, so, um, I do want to, you know, applaud Brittany and both organizations that have committed a commitment towards this. The other thing I want to say, is, I'm throwing this to you, Justin, is we came across, you mentioned this now, that the state of Pennsylvania, as all other states, are very enthusiastically preparing for our two-hundred-and-fifty. Uh, there is a lot of information on behalf of the state of Pennsylvania, how it's involved, resources, I'm gonna email that over to you somehow.
I actually already have a lot of.
You may have.
Yes.
So, uh, I'm thinking that that's way, that seems like it's way down the line, but before we know it, and we introduce Shemoken for him, so. Thank you for revealing me, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank, thank you very much. Parts of the public business.
Well, it was a very good, uh, very good June, nice summer of start, um, I'll start out with June twenty-seventh, is the food, uh, distribution. We had that down on Friday, the twenty-seventh, at Black Hill Park. We served seventy-three households, which was a total of two-hundred-and-nineteen individuals, so that is going very strong. Our next food distribution, and I'll be extending these, we'll get along, will be the twenty-fifth, so the last party of the month. We'll be giving free food, of course, it is, uh, it's by income eligibility, but you can sign up there, so, um, it's very easy to do, and it's our part, and it's going very well. Shemoken Fire Bureau Block Party was on the twenty-eighth, big success, and I just wanna give a shout-out to Matt Barrow, who spearheaded the whole thing, uh, as well as, um, the first responders, uh, everybody stepped up, and it was a fun day, it was a great day, it really was, it was nice, it was nice to see everybody out there, um, supporting the fire departments, can't wait till they do it again, it was very nice. Uh, July fifth, thank you, Justin Babers, thank you for, uh, steering everything that you did with the, uh, independents on the dependents, that turned out very well. Everybody had a good, good day, it was a good turnout, no problems there, uh, and the fireworks too, um, they had a big hiccup, of course, everybody knows, two weeks before, uh, they had to move, uh, they had to move them out, what about, move the fireworks from other mountain, uh, but they, they did it, they, uh, they did it with ease. Boy, I'll tell you what, chief, uh, I was on the phone with chief, and I'm like, what are we gonna do, I'm worried about this and everything, and he said, we've got this, uh, barrier, we talked on the phone, mayor, we talked on the phone, and it was just like, oh gosh, you know, it's gonna be different. But, uh, I, I told you personally, that telling your guys, that, and your ass, your patrol officers, that they did a fabulous job, all day long, there were no incidents, everybody, everybody left in an order, we mattered, and it was a nice thing, so, uh, congratulations, Justin, and CDC, um, the, uh, citizens, uh, Shemoken Fireworks Committee, all short of the first responders, the street department, it was a spectacular job too, thank you all, and did all, everybody did a great job. Um, I gave every, I gave council and Mr. Slavy the update of the season report for the pool, uh, everything's going good, there's an average, for the month of June, twenty twenty-five, they averaged two-hundred-and-twenty-five kitchens per day. So that's going very well, they closed June fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, because of weather, first, you know, uh, they have been doing very well there, general admission, three-thousand fifty-one, uh, total season passes for two-hundred-and-five, and you will see that reported, uh, you are, uh, Mr. Slavy, I didn't even know I was saying, so you'll see that reported, it's a rundown, but we can just go around the pool. Uh, night swims, swims, the first one was a little low, they only had a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty-one people show. But then the next night swim, they had three-hundred-and-twenty-three, the next one they had two-hundred-and-seventy-seven, so it's going well, it is. And it's so funny, because I'm like, you go down to the playground, somebody's there, oh boy, what's going on, you're all at the pool, that's a good idea, so. Uh, the free lunch program is going very well for the kids over at the playground, too, um, they're doing very well with that, I did not get the statistics on that, I don't know that, it's that explosive. Uh, swim lessons, uh, the free swim lessons, thank you to Betsy, thank you for all your help, and, uh, she helped us get the grants, and this was, uh, she did this for a moment, she never came to do this, and I appreciate you going out there and doing this, she got stepping to swim to, um, get us part of the, uh, part of the grant, and then also Tyson, your P.E.V.S. friend, to help make this a free, free swim lessons for anybody involved, and that went out very well, so thank you again, thanks a lot, it's a very good job. Uh, and while I have Betsy's here, my last name would be, is there any way you can give me an update about the facade, because I've been getting calls about when are we getting that fence at the library, and what's going on?
Do you want me to report on it now, or very high?
Say you're ready to report.
There are all.
Okay, you don't.
All tied, uh, so you're not signature, the action is on the list too.
And, that's it.
My type of question, these four, what is the last day, or is it close, we should do now?
You, uh, they did not do that, because they want to find out the school, because we, it, it depends, a lot of our kids go back to school, so that's, it's not a tall. But no, uh, I school, and.
I school Starbucks, I teach my community.
Yeah, so.
So Mike, could you put those reports in our data boxes?
I put them in your desk here.
Okay. You might be over there outside your desk there. Okay, great, and public improvement.
Street department has been very busy, it was a very busy time of the year for them, um, grass cutting does continue, weather permitting. They have been busy doing drain cleaning, uh, patching potholes in the streets, also they started painting lines and intersections and at traffic lights. And recently, I guess there was a lot of graffiti at Patsy steps, so they recently, uh, power washed that, got all that graffiti off. Also, there was a lot of garbage, except ninety-nine steps, Christmas lights were lit up, they were torn down, and when they went to clean that up, they found bags of garbage on either side of the steps, so they had actually climbed over the steps to get all the garbage there and clean that up. So they've been busy doing that, um, I just wanted to remind all the, um, citizens that we do have plenty of recycling containers available for everyone. Recycling happens every Thursday, and, um, we do it except to number one into plastics, brown grade and clear glass, tin and aluminum cans, and also your waste, if you are interested in recycling, you can either contact city hall, via phone or in person, and they will take all of your information and contact you, and drop off the containers at your home. And, who knows, again, to Justin, for the independence independence, it's fantastic, and also Chief Psycho, and all of Shemoken, and both search and fire EMS, for me, did a fantastic job with fireworks, it did go very, very smoothly. That's all that happened.
Okay, just a question, and to note, did they report the garbage to the police? We only got about this right here. So probably a good thing when that happens, and to be. Find out who threw the napkin.
I'll put.
Please, unless, unless those guys are gonna try, please should be involved. Okay, that is, publicly safe. Okay, well, uh, fire bureau report, uh, for a fire, major incident.
For fires, we had four, rescue and emergency medical service, we had nine, hazardous materials, hazardous condition, no fire, four. Service call is five, what an intent call is seven, false alarm and false call, seven, call of thirty-six, that's for the fires, and now code. We have rental revenue is a thousand, parking permits is two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten, other permit is six-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Our code violations is five-hundred, unless the language is, after, et cetera, is two dollars, our total grand total is ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Okay, and that's all I got.
Control, um, mayor, nothing for, uh, council this evening, but I can have a minute, just give a report on the home rule, uh, committee?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Um, the home rule commission met last Monday, July seventh, uh, at that meeting, we were tasked with, uh, reviewing and adopting the final report, which will be submitted to the board of elections, so that the charter can be placed on the, on the November fourth ballot, um. At that meeting last Monday, we also formally adopted the charter. The completed charter and, uh, final report are available in city hall. Uh, at this point, there are two official copies that are stamped by the board of elections, correct, my one, and my third one.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, as, uh, Mr. Kinder indicated, uh, the home rule state commission did vote last week, um, and pursuant to, uh, law, we needed to file that with the board of elections, that was filed today, um, the board of elections has an original, which I'll, is the, uh, for the question, and it's placed on ballot. Uh, Mr. Slavy has another, uh, copy, he's going to rip the copies out, and send that to D.C.P.D., also, which is required, yeah, and I have one, uh, that I'll give to, uh, the, the home rule section, so, that's been done, so, what's the next steps, or?
We have, uh, thank you, and I appreciate, I appreciate all the work, I appreciate all the work that all the commission members have done, some of which are, also, council, mayor, treasurer, uh, who else is here, but that's this year, and our vice chairman, we go, so, I just want to thank everyone, I, I don't believe fifteen months have passed, since we first, that our first home rule commission meeting, and, uh, to be quite honest with you, I was pretty intimidated with the, with the task we were assigned. I learned a lot more than I thought I knew, uh, met a lot of people, talked to a lot of people, I've enjoyed it, and, uh, whether or not it's adopted or not, uh, it's now going to be up to the commission to educate the public, disarm any disinformation, just put the facts out there, and whether the citizens choose it or not, is going to be up to them, so, uh, I'm very pleased with the product that was, that we, that we produced, and, uh, like I said, it's been a long fif, it hasn't been a long fifteen months, it scares me how fast time passes, but over a lot of meetings, and our, uh, so, our city solicitor is also our home rule commission, so it's there, so between the people from the state, and Attorney Greco, there was a lot of discussions that had to go on, and, uh, they all got ironed out, and it's complete, so, I'll shut up with that. I'd just like to echo those words, thank you very much, Mr. Kinder, and the commissions for all the time that everybody put into it, Mr. Greco, Mr. Slavy, and even the city staff, that have an awful lot of work to do that, um, kudos to you, love it, like it or not, it, uh, there was an awful lot of work that we need to get at where it's at, appreciate it. Thank you, mayor. Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd also like to thank everyone that was involved, his, uh, and all the members that he cited, just as an information, you know, obviously, the, the city is governed currently by the third-class city code. So, the government study commission tried to follow that code as closely as possible, I would say we've adopted ninety-eight-point-five percent of the third-class city code that existed, the other one and a half percent were very minor changes, and they actually were to benefit the citizens of the state of Shemoken, putting its own protections, um, allowing them to, uh, ask for referendums or questions regarding issues that may have come up, so, it really is not a drastic change from what the city has been governed by, so my estimation is that one and a half percent, I think, are protections that are built in to benefit the city as well as the citizens, so thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer, please.
Uh, I don't have a report, ma'am, but I have a request.
Sure.
I would like to have the checks from city hall, remember my office needs to be reviewed, so, that was a policy for that.
Okay, so, walk me through that, please.
Okay, um, I used to get all the checks from city hall.
Before they were sent out?
Yes. Yes. Now, if we're invaded, um, look at them, that's fine. But if there was something.
There's something to this here.
Correct, I'd like to see them for yourself. I'm a signer, I'm all the way out.
Okay. Brenda, let's sell it.
Yes.
Need two signals.
Yeah.
And is that, is that part of an issue with our paper thing?
In processing, uh, as deliciously, it could be.
Only if I was on vacation there.
Okay, so as long as Brenda is not.
As long as she doesn't process, yeah, do seem to be, but I first came here. On this day, it's not as soon as it's to be moved, processed and all, as quickly as possible, like, don't let bills sit around, et cetera, et cetera, and if.
It's somehow it just stopped, they just stopped coming, because at first we were getting lost. I don't know where it stopped, I don't remember, changed personnel. Yeah.
They will not hamper.
No.
As long as it doesn't hamper the operation, and if there would be an issue, needless to say, just bring this over to my attention at least, and we'll try to get it rectified as quick as possible, but if I don't see any issue.
Two signatures, that's all I ask. And if the mayor friend is not available, then far better design.
It uh sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Uh, for June of twenty twenty-five, juvenile arrests were one, criminal complaints thirty-four, non-traffics one, traffic citations ninety, traffic warnings two, parking tickets three hundred and six, parking citations one, swig their tickets two hundred, code tickets four, total calls one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven for the month, with three thousand nine hundred and fifty miles patrol. Uh, just a reminder, our national night out is August fifth, five to eight. I provided the, hopefully council, everybody has your invites. Um, also, our patrol truck has made it undamaged. That is currently in Northumberland, they're going to be starting the installation of equipment within the next two weeks, I believe. Uh, checked on the academy, our three cadets are doing exceptionally well. We're just going to hang on for three and a half more months, and we'll be here, so that's going to be a plus. And like I did in years past, uh, July twelfth, uh, on Saturday, I celebrated my fourth year as the chief of police. I've done it every year, and again, I would extend my thanks to Mr. Slavy, Mr. Mayor, all the council members, everyone who I work with. And and again, it it's it's a pleasure serving for you guys, so I just, I I wanted to let us all know that. And other than that, no executive sessions needed.
That was a classic. I do want to say one thing on Chief Psycho, uh, on the men and also the firefighters in both offices, the time and effort that they put into making sure our city was safe over the Fourth of July holiday was absolutely impressive on my side. The um, everything they did and planned it was, I I can't even imagine what it took to put it all together and uh and how they pulled it off with, to my knowledge, zero issues. So kudos to Newman and your staff, Bruce, and the fire department for all of your help. Uh, mentorial to make sure our citizens were safe. Thank you. Okay, next are events.
No.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to go first?
Well, I'll let you fight over this one.
I'll come up to the podium so everyone can hear me tonight. Um, so I'd like to open the first public hearing for the City of Schmoken's twenty-twenty-five Community Development Block grant application. I'm Tanya Truch, for those who don't know me, CEDOC, CDVG project coordinator for the City of Schmoken. Tonight's uh public hearing workshop is the first step in the process of applying for the City of Schmoken's twenty-twenty-five CDVG allocation. I'll explain some of the general CDVG regulations governing project funding, and we'll share some required announcements about the CDVG program. Um, you each have a packet discussing uh what I'll be going over here, and if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. So the Community Development Block Grant Program was created through an act of Congress. Funds from these grants come from the federal rub grant through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to the state of Pennsylvania. PA Act one seventy-nine created an entitlement grant program for municipalities, which is administered through the PA Department of Economic, Community and Economic Development, or the CED. The purpose of the CDVG program is to assist Schmoken with enhancing the viability of its city by targeting and funding projects to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, principally for low to moderate income persons. Tonight, we'll discuss the regulatory requirements associated with CDVG, CDVG, L and O P, uh funded projects, discuss known projects for twenty-twenty-five CDVG funding, discuss the obligations of applicants, and invite proposals from the public. So Schmoken's twenty-twenty-five CDVG allocations are three hundred and six thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Out of those funds, admin to CEDOC will be approximately fifty-three thousand seven hundred, therefore letting project funding of two hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, generally, the city puts thirty percent towards demolition, which would be seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars, leaving available for LMI projects of seventy percent for one hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And I'd like to direct your attention to the application schedule, which is attached to your agenda packet. Um, some key things to note is that the city will review and vote to select its final projects at its regularly scheduled meeting on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at six P M here at City Hall. The public hearing will be September eighth at six P M. The public will have a chance to comment on projects that are selected for this year's CDVG funding, as well as previously funded projects. The city will pass the resolution to apply its regular, to apply at its regular council meeting on September eighth. So these grant funds for twenty twenty-five will be expected this spring of twenty twenty-six. Eligibility under the CDVG guidelines. So projects potentially eligible for funding with CDVG include a broad range of activities, such as infrastructure improvements, which can include roads, water, sewer, sewer, stormwater, uh, storm sewer, community centers, historic preservation, economic development activities, and public service projects. Activities not eligible for funding would include political activities, general operating expenses, anything considered to be a maintenance activity, as well as any activity that is the general purpose of government to provide to its citizens. A list is included in your information packet. So the federal and state requirements of the CDVG program require that all projects uh funded through it meet one of three national objectives. So they are to benefit low to moderate income persons. Specifically, fifty-one percent of individuals benefiting from the project must be of low to moderate income. This is the object, uh, the objective that's most often met by projects using CDVG funding. Uh, I just want to make note that fifty-five percent of all Schmoken residents are low to moderate income. Any project benefiting the entire city and only the city is automatically fundable. If the project benefits only a certain pro- portion of the city, uh, we must first determine the service area of the project, which means who will be benefited. If the boundaries of the project are as same as the census data survey boundaries, that data may be used to determine eligibility. If the service area boundaries are different than those of the service track, the applicant must survey the service area to ensure fifty-one percent of its residents are low, moderate individ- individuals. And again, seventy percent of the city's funding must be used to meet this objective. The second objective is the elimination of slumber light. A maximum percentage of CDVG funding is thirty percent. This has been used by the city each year to demolish deteriorated structures. The city will have seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars to spend on demolition if the city chooses to fund demolition projects. Response to urgent need is the third objective. Uh, this was last used in twenty twenty for the COVID pandemic. This requires a formal declaration of a disaster or an emergency. The city must apply for a project that is both eligible and fundable, meaning, meaning that it meets national objective. There are no match requirements or expectations for this funding. Um, a project summary form is included in your packet, which uh, we need a project description, location map, service area map. Today's public hearing is the first step in the process of updating a three-year community development plan for the county as part of the CDVG application process. This three-year community development plan will be developed as part of the CDVG application, and I'll provide a draft for your approval. So we also have uh the fair housing notice, which is attached in your packet, a copy of the fair housing notice. Uh, Northumberland County has adopted and published a fair housing analysis and established a pan- a plan to further shore fair housing in the county, and the city has adopted that plan. Additionally, it is the intent of Northumberland County to undertake CDVG activities which do not result in displacement of residents. However, the county's residential anti-displacement plan and relocation assistance plan is attached for your review. Again, the city has adopted this plan. Uh, the five oh four annual review is attached to the agenda, uh, the city's required section five oh four annual review as part of each year's CDVG application. The city solicits public input on the accessibility of the city's facilities and programs to the learning, mobility, vision, hearing, and language impaired persons. If the public is aware of any need for modifications to the city's facilities or programs in order to increase accessibility, those needs can be identified during the public's opportunity to propose projects later in the hearing. And finally, I'd like to draw your attention to the section three preference statement at the bottom of the public meeting, meeting agenda. Interested individuals or businesses are invited to contact CEDOC's Community Development Program for more information. So projects that we currently have underway or recently completed in the city, um, dangerous properties at one eighteen, one twenty-two East Independent Street were demolished at the end of twenty twenty-one, and CDVG funds were used to, to help construct a illumination station in twenty twenty-three. West Comer Street reconstruction took place in November twenty twenty-four, and there are currently eight properties undergoing demolition as we currently speak. So at this time, I'd like to give anyone present the opportunity to propose projects for CDVG funding consideration or to discuss project ideas. That's it. So this is on behalf of Matt McMullen, the project he was working on, he was the city's uh, there for Vista. Project that he was working on was to ask for CDVG funds for two bus stops for Independent Street. One would be in front of the Tunso Building, and one where the bus already stopped, one in front of Luna's Pizza. So I, I can get the information and how much that was and provide it, and council will inevitably decide how they want to spend their CDVG funds, but I told Matt that I've been carrying this out and put it out for your consideration. Um, generally, the city puts money into uh road construction projects. Uh, Kevin did say that there were a few different roads that could be rehabbed or reconstructed. Um, he didn't have a list at the time, but we'll have those ready for our next workshop that we can discuss those. Um, we also received um two requests through the public. Um, one is for settling tanks for the Schmoken whole township joint, your authority. Um, they were looking for roughly nine hundred thousand dollars um to rehabilitate the settling tanks uh for the S C T J S A. Um, we know that your CDVG funding does not cover that, but the uh, Mr. Petrovic is looking for maybe a, is CDVG funding as a fair share, um, and then go for competitive for the balance of the funding. So that is something that we can talk uh further about, I do have further information on that. Um, and also, the Schmoken Education Foundation is looking for funding to provide a handicapped accessibility, ADA accessibility, to the Schmoken um football field. So they are uh reaching out to um businesses and organizations trying to come up with funding for the Field House. Uh, those were just a few of the applications that I received. Um, does anyone else have any comments?
Do the double it.
I'd love to double it. It, it seems no matter how much we get, those funds can always go to something. So uh, let's see, at this time, I'd like to give anyone present the opportunity at any projects proposed tonight for twenty twenty-four, or for funded with previous CDVG allocations. And hearing, no other comments, I'll conclude this portion of the twenty twenty-five CD. Could you share a little bit about the code officer, a lot?
Yes, yes, actually, I'll conclude the meeting for the CDVG funding. Um, but I do want to talk to you all about the funding that we have for code enforcement program. So I've talked to you previously about the funding that we have available. Uh, it's five thousand dollars, and that was for the federal fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, that expend date, uh, the date that those funds have to be spent by is nine thirty, uh, actually, yeah, nine thirty twenty twenty-five. Um, I've talked to council before, um, five thousand dollars for code enforcement is a drop in the bucket. Um, the city of Berwick is also uh has the code enforcement program going. Um, generally, we like to see at least twenty to forty thousand dollars put into code enforcement for it to help the program, especially for a part-time employee like you're seeking, um, to cover their expenses. I have gone over with Bruce, uh, the information that would be needed. Um, I've also sent the information to Mayor McLaughlin, and I believe Barry has it as well. Um, it is time, it does take a lot of time. Um, it's uh very rule regulated, but I believe with the practices that we have in place already, the program could be built upon, and it could.
But I believe with the practices that we have in place already, the program could be built upon and it could be a success. Um, again, though, that would be funding coming out of your C D B G allocations. If you choose to uh, revise the money in twenty twenty-one, maybe put it in an active project that we can spend it quickly and then do a twenty twenty-five project or either reallocate funds from previous years. Say, do I have any questions on that?
There is no limit to what we can do on that.
There is a limit, so um, there are two, there are two block groups within the city that are not L M I. So those two block groups would not be eligible for code enforcement through this funding. We would have to stay with the seven other block groups. Uh, but I don't foresee that being a problem because that's where the majority of the, the issues are anyways.
And on the dollar figure, we can, we can adjust that according to our wishes.
So this is a public service. Um, code enforcement does fall under those guidelines, so there is a fifteen percent cap.